Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw here, Commissioner Schindel.
Here.
Commissioner Hamel.
Here.
County Clerk's Office.
Here.
And please don't stand and join us in opening prayer of state standing for the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your work lesson, and thank you for the right to vote. Thank you for the benefits we enjoy in Orange County. We ask that you be with us today and help us make our decisions beneficial for the county.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I want the agenda to be her. There's one, two Carter. So just talk loud because we don't have mark of laws.
Okay.
As we await the outcome of today's election, I think it important to have a plan and know what needs to be done if the restoration bond passes. I know all the members of this court have waited to hear what the majority of voters want to see happen with the courthouse and will then do what it takes to see that the will of the people is carried out. If Proposition 1 for courthouse restoration passes, we will be able to begin Phase 1 immediately. We can accomplish this by providing M.J. Boyle with a written notice to proceed with the current contract. After M.J. Boyle receives this written notice, he will be able to place an under construction sign on the courthouse grounds and we will be officially underway. So this is not a long time-consuming process. We write the notice to proceed to M.J. Boyle and he can have an under construction sign here. We will be meeting the requirements of the THC and we can begin. The 619,000 grant funding will be available to us and for our bills, we can begin to submit them to Austin. The courthouse will be vacated and the restoration construction can begin. So this is what, there is a plan, it can happen quickly and it can work if the restoration bond passes. Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Sue, the only one? The next one is reading your minutes.
Shouldn't there have been a rate in that motion? It's not written in there, maybe it wasn't in the motion approved. Just figuring this, shouldn't there have been a rate written in that?
If there was a motion made with a rate, then it would've been there.
Okay. Well, I'm not saying it was, but I think it, I just want to note that that, if it passed something like that, it should have a rate in it.
I'm not sure how you have to correct that, Mr. Bustelman. How would you correct that? Put it back on the agenda?
Do that, or you can do it well. If it's, if it's an error, it should be disnumbered for a point, which is the procedure. But if it wasn't done, then it needs to be put back on the agenda and then add that in. Am I making sense?
Absolutely. But if it was a task B, did we execute anything? Was there something attached? Did you have any kind of attachment that you gave us?
I don't know what the agenda item is, I don't know what you were referring to.
Well, it's a legal rate.
What? Yes, there was rates quoted in the proposal from task B. I don't remember what they are off the top of my head, but.
Did you get that to us? Was that included with the stuff?
That was included in the discussion, I don't know if it was included in the motion, which the motion is what's recorded.
Was there an attachment?
Is it proper to have it in the motion or is the attachment sufficient?
I don't have it with me, I don't have the whole seven minutes, I need to have it direct. But was there an attachment with the task and stuff that we could just say, see attachment or something? I don't have it with me, you should see, I don't know.
But Luana, you would have a, a copy of that, what the rate is and so forth, so it's recorded in your office?
Well, it's also recorded with the minutes because it had to be executed by the court, so.
That's what I'm saying, we signed something. Say, see attached or something. And if there's not something attached, I guess we can put it back on the agenda.
So then we don't have to, it's there, you can find it if you look at the attachments and things, but it's not in there.
Right. It just, it says see attached, we didn't know what the rate was. The only thing I saw on number 28, it says Jane Schindel with vermin's.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Jane Keller Chang and Kugel R.
Somebody called me Terry the other day.
Terry, will that work?
I answered it pretty much.
Did you have any?
Predicted for lunch or dinner or?
You learned that being a baby, right?
Yes, ma'am. I was referred to as Pete.
That's all right.
Been gone a long time.
On the, on the October 17th, did you have any other questions?
There's, I made another call.
What day? Wait, that's the 31st, but we're going to go with 31st on the 17th. It says a motion made by Commissioner Yauer and seconded by Commissioner Hamel. Mr. Hamel was not here at that meeting.
That don't mean I can't make a motion.
Well, were you loud? Did you scream loud? Where were you, Carl?
Calling in.
You called it in. Oh, my friend.
Text message, via text message.
Oh, good Lord, that's enough. And the only other question I had on the 31st would be on number 21. And that's only because this is very confusing to me. Not, not that the item's confusing to me, what's going on is confusing to me, but on number 21, it was that we take an emergency action until it's determined what the true agreement is. Did we not say that this will not supersede any other agreement? Because we're finding out, some people are telling us there's no contract, some people are telling us that there is, so we're still digging.
The, the one that you said would not supersede any other agreement is number 22. Number 21, the motion that you made was that, that this would be an emergen, as an emergency until it is determined what the true agreement is.
We didn't say anything about superseding there at all?
Not on that one, not on that motion.
Because I know we made a, we were, we were saying it for the second one, I thought we said it for both of them, that neither one of them were supersede. So I don't know if we know what's going on with those. Some people say yes, contract, some people say no contract. I can't find any contracts. Sheriff said Geraldine looked in your office, she can't find the hospital, I don't know. Ross says he might be able to produce something, so.
Number 15 on the 31st, egg, egg extension. This is, they got, egg extension and multipurpose has 150. Egg extension, I believe is 160.
Sure is.
I'll make the motion.
Go, go wait, we're looking, we're going to read it first.
To accept.
Okay, review and, so we can move on after the reading, okay. Review and correct me first court minutes for the month of October 2011, 11, 14, 17, and 31. Now go ahead, James.
I'll make the motion to accept the commissioners' court minutes for the month of October 2011, October 11, 14, 17, and the 31st.
With corrections noted.
With the corrections noted.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 8 on the agenda, a discussion of possible action regarding previously approved treasurer's report in compliance with Local Government Code 114026. I put that on there, I contacted Bustelman and by, the treasurer's report that.
We're not approaching.
Yes. The treasurer's report that we see last month, County Auditor's report, with the exact same reports with different numbers in them.
Well, I think what, the bottom line was the same, but when I ran my report, I didn't run the CD part of it, so it lessened stuff off and Luana has made, these are the corrections for, so I don't know if you want me to, this explains what happened. If you want us to come back with the new report the next time, you know, the spreadsheet that we do with the corrections on it showing. Do you have mine?
Yes, I have one top.
What had happened is, is 103,1000 on hers, it shows it, but on mine, I didn't run that report, so it makes it look different.
Okay, this one, let me pull them apart. I put them all together and I'll pull them apart.
Yeah. When you run the, on hers, has she ran the 101, 103,1000 report?
Uh huh.
It shows the CDs are outstanding and I didn't run that, so it doesn't show it. Our end total was the same, I believe, but that's what the difference is going to look like on the county district report on the 130.
Okay. Look at the end total by what we, on receipt, she has 11,521, you have 9,766.
Why is it interesting?
And the dispersments, she have 11 million and you have, what is that, 4 million? So that's a pretty big discrepancy, but it's, we need to figure out where these discrepancies are.
And that's probably what the CDs, has limited the CDs, or the CDs or something.
Now the closing balance, y'all's closing balances were similar, but y'all's receipts were over $2 million difference and y'all's dispersments were over $7 million difference.
Okay, okay. I'll go back in between the two and we can sort that.
Can you, can you just get us another one and we'll just put it back?
Yeah, we just put up on the November agenda.
Because we did, we, we accepted it because we've never had, y'all never compared them before.
Right, right.
And now that we're comparing them.
We're seeing the difference.
We're starting, we're turning into the exact same report with the exact same dates with $7 million and $4 million difference. And somebody's going to catch that.
Right, and it's probably just something that we need to go back and make correct on that, but that's the ones that we could see where the differences was, but I haven't seen her report, so we'll have to get to get on that.
And then the other thing by, is I told, if it's in here, we pulled that 114, I pulled it for y'all, you can move on page, five of 12 with a 114. And I'm confused that you and Luana can figure this out, or we can figure it out, or somebody can figure it out. In both 114 and 115, I think Luana, your 115, I pulled all these and read these, I'm getting the same reports from both y'all and with the different numbers and stuff, so I was trying to see what reports we're actually supposed to have up here. On 114026, I know Luana is turning in a debts due to and owed by the county.
Right, how she does the bills.
Uh huh. And in your county treasurer's report, on 1140262, you're supposed to turn in one of those two. And so I kind of questioned Bob and then I asked Ross, why is that like that? I don't know, the answer is, I don't know, y'all are just supposed to turn one in because it's what the code says.
So we would turn in the same thing? Okay, and that's how I was doing, yeah, I pulled it up too and I read it, I'm like, okay, there's one thing I see I'm not doing.
And we haven't, yeah, and we haven't had number two since we've been here.
Right, and I've never done that.
114026 is number two?
Yeah, I've never done that.
Okay, we're supposed to be turning that in, and when I got all these reports that were so discrepant in numbers, I went and I pulled all y'all's statutes to make sure that we were getting the right reports from the right people. I took it to Mr. Bustelman and made him read it all, so we read it all to make sure that we're getting, we have way too many numbers skewed out there. I mean, we're looking at millions of dollars that we don't know where they're.
It's, they're, they're there, the money is there, it's just we need to figure out why.
The reports need to reflect that.
Right, correct.
Yeah, we're turning in, so, um.
Yeah, the number two, I can, that's not a big deal.
Okay.
She'll have to give me the report, right? Well, it says debts due to and owed by the county, and I'm assuming that's the bills.
It says at least once a month that a record terms of Commissioner's Court, shall be made a detailed report.
So I just need to give them, uh.
A listing of what's on state?
I hate you for the.
Updated after we have.
Okay, okay, so it's not going to be the same thing. What it's going to be is like the certificates of obligations, the time warrants.
I'm turning that in now. Also, I'm doing that on my side.
For some reason, in the code, both y'all do it.
Right.
I mean, Local Government Code and.
I think the Local Government Code probably was written that way for.
Checks and balances.
Well, for counties without auditors or for counties without treasurers, so that it gets submitted to court one way or the other.
That's not what it said.
Well, I know, but it listed as dues for both.
Right, yeah.
But if the county is small enough, it doesn't have an auditor, then you're getting the information from the treasurer. If they have both positions, you get it from both. If they don't have a treasurer, you get it from the auditor. It's just so that the information is reported to the court. It was written.
And you can find it here, we can just do it once, that's fine by me, but I can't find that anywhere.
Well, I don't think y'all.
And two, I think hers has to be approved, yours doesn't.
Correct, right.
So yours has to be turned in and hers has to be approved, so we still have to have a vote.
And I think too, in some of, not on like how many counties, some of the counties, the treasurer's office does the, all the accounts payable also too, so that might be something on there.
So I guess my question here is, I said, discussion of possible action regarding previously approved treasurer's report, um, I think we just need to, we can't leave those just sitting in there from October 31st the way they're written. We have to do something.
May September 30th.
September 30th, yeah, to the end of September 30th.
And we'll, we'll do, make a correction and on the November 30th, we, you'll put it back on the agenda to approve, revise September 30th, treasurer's report, we can make those corrections, that's not, we can do that. And then I'll include in there the debts due to and owed by the county on that, and I don't have those for today's, but I can put that on the November, is that the 30th? Is that the last day of the month? On that one, I can put to revise the October report also to include those debts. Is that all right?
I think that's, will that work, Mr. B?
Just go back and, and then from here on forward, make sure those are included.
You go to call the correction. Corrected?
Corrected, yeah.
We'll capture.
Amended.
An amended.
Amended or corrected.
Amended or corrected, I don't care how we say it, as long as the numbers match when people go look at them.
Right, okay. Which area you play.
But we need to capture that in our action so it'll be reported in the minute, so we know that we did fix these reports or that you are.
It's a work in progress.
Yes, it is a work in progress because we can't have numbers, somebody's going to catch numbers that big of a difference and say, wait a second. So, and actually, I think that was me, so, discussion of possible action regarding previously approved treasurer's report, and then also, we're going to capture the debts owed on the back of your report.
Right. And also too, if you look, um, might be on page, the next page?
Uh huh.
I think you and Carol were the only ones that were signing those. And I think everybody's supposed to be signing those. On my, she gets like a cover sheet from me.
And some of them I didn't even sign, some of them had just been recorded.
Well, as on today's.
I think you're right, Commissioner's Court probably needs to be signed.
Well, it tells you on here, the county judge and each county commissioner shall give an affidavit stating that the requirements of supplication see have been met.
So.
So on today's report, it gives you a place for all of y'all to sign on that.
So then I make the action that we correct and or amend the previously approved treasurer's report in compliance with 114026.
Can you be specific, by September?
You make the action, Judge.
I make the mo, did I say action?
You did.
I'm sorry, make the motion. I know what I meant.
The September 30th, that way.
September 30th, yes, and, and that way we can get this to where it looks like it's supposed to look, sort of making it accurately. And also to capture that section B on there, which is the debts due to and owed by the county.
And then I didn't put that in today's, um, report, so that also needs.
When we get to today's report, we'll add that too.
They will amend that one, okay.
Okay, so anyway, I make the motion that we amend, we allow by to amend that treasurer's report, turn us in the correct report, amend and or correct report, and to capture the debts owed in that report, which you mentioned. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Was that clear, Mr. B? Did anybody get that clear?
I understand it a little bit.
Okay, number nine is to discuss approved, disapproved Christmas party, Commissioner's Court to accept monetary donations to the party, set budget with monetary donations to the Christmas party, and adopt a budget for the Christmas party, and that's you by.
What had happened, the judge and I had some email conversation on the legalities of accepting money for the Christmas party. And in the past, we've accepted donations and used it for the Christmas party, and at the end of the year, or beginning of the first part of the year, we would give a report on what we've collected and spent and everything. According to 81.032, Local Government Code, once you adopt your budget, any money that you receive after that has to be set in a special budget. And so any donations, monetary donations we receive from, for the Christmas party, Commissioner's Court have to first accept it, and then you set a special budget and approve that budget, and then, um, adopt the budget. So basically, you'll have to make a motion to involve, if I'm getting off wrong here, if you make a motion to accept monetary donations, um, the budget, Luana just talked about it, Christmas party budget, $1,500, expense received, $1,500, that's about what we get, and then we can get it written and reported at the end.
The, I think the question, the reason that this came up, is somebody, and I don't remember who told me, and, I mean, I don't, because I talk to y'all all the time, but.
Jim Ellis.
No, I haven't talked to him like that. But he, he'll tell me if I call him, um, that we usually accept $1,000 from one of our vendors, Banks.
Yes, yes, Mr. Banks.
And I went and I talked to Mr. Bustelman and I said, Mr. B, we're accepting that money, what are we doing with that money? Because I was uncomfortable with it, and the reason I went and talked to Mr. B is, we vote for Mr. Banks to accept, Commissioner's Court votes to accept contracts with him, but we're accepting money from him. And I, and I felt like we were in a different situation, and then when I pulled 81032, I read it when you sent it to me, and then I pulled the other one, the budget officer that you sent to me, and it says, when I took this to Mr. Bustelman, it says, "The Commissioner's Court may accept a gift, grant, donation, dequest, or divise of money or other property on behalf of the county for the purpose of performing a function conferred by law on the county or a county officer." And I asked him, I said, like, you know, does this meet the statute? And he looked at me and goes, "I don't think so." So then we pulled the budget one, so when I talked to Mr. Bustelman, I was just really concerned about the fact that we're accepting $1,000 for somebody that we're also accepting a contract. And I don't know if that's.
That's not, I don't think that ought to be done.
Wardlaw also is the one that donates, and then Wardlaw, they're the ones that does the appraisal, right?
Same thing, because they're the contract also.
Then B and G material, that's only three, that.
I don't think we should be severing them, because you're, you're getting money from somebody that you have given a contract to.
But we don't do the contract with Wardlaw, the frizzle district does.
Yeah, that's totally different, thank you.
And then last year, they didn't donate anything, but in the past, they've had, so.
I know, the first year we had this Christmas party, a lot, some of the commissioners went out and solicited from.
And that's what we still do for door prices.
That's just not good.
Okay, well then, we're just not going to have a Christmas party.
That's even better.
Okay. So I guess the question on here was the budget.
We had Christmas parties before where everybody just came in and it was like we do here, okay?
Well, I'm not getting involved in something that's going to be held over my head.
We've been having Christmas parties for 117 years in law, what's, what's different about this year?
The way the money is gotten, what's gotten.
Well, did you go to last year's Christmas party? I think it was the same.
It's just that, my, my only question is, is we're the five people that vote for these people, okay? And then they're accepting money from them.
Let's hear a solution, not just the problem, and what's wrong with.
If you want to have a Christmas party.
Yes, we need to have a Christmas party, Bob. I know you don't like Christmas, but everybody else does, so.
That's a hell of a thing to say.
Well, you took down the Christmas tree last year, so, I mean, I'm just thinking, maybe you don't like Christmas.
Nevertheless, it's not the Christmas, it's the way that the money was gotten to do that.
Okay, well, let's figure out another way to get the money, have a Christmas party.
You go to every department head and ask if they want to make a donation for a Christmas party.
If you can show me a legal, some statute or something, I mean.
I'm telling you, I don't need to show you anything.
What it says though, Carl, is it says a function conferred by law on a county or county officer.
Right.
What is this function conferred by law? We're accepting $1,000 from somebody we're voting for.
Right, but I mean, doesn't the statute say that if you accept it and you approve it, you put it in account and you spend it?
And Christmas is a pagan holiday anyway.
I, I've made the copies for you, they're in there, read them. If you're comfortable by accepting it, I'm just saying, I'm not. But if you're comfortable.
I think it's wrong. Christmas is not.
It could turn into an ethical violation, we're voting for these people.
Well, I know Ann's not going to ask him for the money, and I'm not going to ask him for the money, so that's it.
For any member.
Right?
Yeah, we're.
We're not asking him for the money, so there's no need to discuss it.
Except any more than $49.98.
As elected officials, we do not accept.
$500 just to make them write a check.
It's, it's a nice gesture, but if you are really aware of the fact that Christmas, 25th of December, is a pagan holiday.
Well, all of that has nothing to do with anything, it just has to do with.
I guess we were in violation last year, year before.
You were, that's right.
Boy, there's some, there's some suits coming down on that.
Well, there probably won't be, but you asked me whether or not you could do that, and I'm telling you, you can't. It's that simple. Do whatever you want to. And I think all of you agree, we shouldn't be doing that, because you're, you're accepting gratuitity from someone that you have given a contract to. I know it's after the fact, but.
The county, the commissioners just cowboy out, what are we going to do?
All right, we can't, we can't solicit.
That's right.
For donation for Christmas parties. Okay, do you want to have a Christmas party, Carl?
Yeah, don't you?
Yeah, I'll have a bunch of Christmas parties.
You want to have a county Christmas party?
Well, it don't make me a difference, I have never been to one, I don't know what they are, but it'd probably be all right.
That was a yes or no question. Yes, you want to have a Christmas party?
I haven't decided that yet.
Okay, it doesn't say that, it says to accept donations, monetary donations, and to adopt a budget. So if we, we're not, if we're not accepting donations from somebody, that's the question that I'm asking.
Well, we have a county municipal building preserved for December 2nd, the first Friday in December, I need to know whether or not to cancel that.
And I mean, if, if everybody wants to pay their part to have a Christmas party, I mean, nobody really, I mean, owes us anything, if we have it, we're the ones having it, it's us, it's for us.
I'll say this, Carl, if we have a Christmas party, I'll donate under $50 for it.
$49.
$49.98.
$49.99.
So anyway, let's, we didn't even want with this agenda.
I'll donate that money, I'll say that.
Do you have anything to say, you're just sitting there?
About what? I'm so sick and tired of this crap, but, uh.
I mean, really.
It's, uh, yeah, I don't intend a Christmas party, that they ought to attend to one or two, but yeah, I would love to have a Christmas party for the, I know that's not on there, but for the, you know.
We know a lot you asked you for the DJ, right? You and me, all of us.
Yeah, but I think what the judge is saying, that's actually not the question here, right?
It's not the question here, it's accepting money, donations from these vendors.
Right. Now, if it's going to be anything that illegal that's going to hurt the county or something like that by accepting the money, no, I don't want to do it. Not, not the Christmas party, accepting the money.
Accepting the money.
But if y'all want to figure out a different way to do it, I'm here, you know, help out.
Well, let's do this, and y'all can figure that out later, so we can.
That's what I said, let's go.
You don't want to put on a wrong party, you don't want to be so elaborate.
So what are we doing here? We can't accept monetary donations from vendors. Is that, if I make a motion, we do not accept monetary donations from vendors that we contract with for our Christmas party?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Was there any opposed on that one? Number ten is to discuss approve, disapprove, designate any courthouse front door at new location at the new Anximus Square, two-ten West Calvert for postings and ourselves. I put that on there, Mr. B and I pulled that up, he's got that in here for you. And it looks like we might have jumped the gun a little bit because it says courthouse door is meant by the principal entrances to the courthouse and it's the last place District Court was held. We cannot move that enclosed glass, closed case, I mean closure until District Court's held somewhere else.
You know, that's really, that's correct. However, it's kind of silly because who's going to come into the courthouse except on court day and the only people that come in there then are lawyers and defendants and then litigation, litigers, litigators. And it really should be over where the bulk of the people go into, which is going to, I assume is going to be the annex.
But the losses, we can't move it yet.
I understand, but you could put up another one there. You're going to have to get one of these days anyway.
Well, and I know Pete's looking into that, but that's not on the agenda today. What we thought is we were going to be able to move it and then we pulled all the statutes and we pulled everything and it says we can't, so District Court's literally held, we have, it's got to stay there.
It's got to stay there until the District Court moves into the new building or wherever they move to.
So-
So I think you just need to pass that.
No action? You guys okay with that? Y'all under, look what I put in there for y'all on this deal, read that please. Does y'all understand what I'm talking about, that number ten where it says courthouse doors? The next one is number eleven, it's discuss approve, disapprove, ratification and amendments to the Karnes County investment policy.
Can I get a bar?
Come up on it because, and I put this on here, but Bye sent this to me.
There was just some changes that were effective October first and I think Mr. Bustelman and Barbara and George Ross might have been working on it because it's a little over my little Polish head on exactly what we need to put in there or not put in there.
And I don't think that, I don't think the changes were as bad as you thought they were, okay? I think, um, if y'all will look at it, it says investment policy. And on number seven-
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Did you bring your policy?
No, I forgot.
There's an extra, look at Sylvia's desk, you can grab one or grab Carl's or somebody's. Yeah, you have one in there. Yeah. Come on here, Bye, come on here. On number seven, it has, involves investment officers who will review and you've sent us these, that's this.
Well, and the only person, the only person that questioned that was Wayne Byer and the new ones haven't talked about it and he just asked me, what do I do? And I said, well, I go to class and keep up my certification and he said, well, that's good enough for him.
You have it on there, on the bottom.
Right.
I mean, the only other thing you can do is add a deal saying that y'all went over this and just say what we, uh, do you want to do that?
Yeah, you can add, that's it, yeah. This is reviewed by the auditor, by the auditor.
And then the other part, Bye, was you have in there, this is what you're doing now.
Yes.
Hold on, it's in there. Let me grab it. It says that you were doing only number one and number two, you're doing the certificates of obligation and the T, the tax and the T and L investment pool.
See, and we don't really do anything in the investment pool because of the rates are so low.
Okay.
So we just do everything through them. It just gives you an option to do that.
If we go into anything further, that's going to include mortgage obligations and other obligations, you're going to want to Fannie Mae and stuff like that. And that's going to get sticky and nasty.
Yeah, and I don't have time to-
So the only, sorry, pick it up. The only thing that you can take out is this internal controls and say that you have it.
I'm taking it out?
Well, because it says you shall establish a system that's written in internal controls, say that you have established.
Oh, okay.
You've done it.
Okay.
You have it. You have it and attach it.
Okay.
Just change that.
Okay.
And then you guys go over it and-
And deal with it with that.
You implement it with your people.
Okay.
And then attach it.
Okay.
And then when you bring it back, you can, you can let us know. See, incorporate county treasurer, you got that in there. So just attach this to this. And you're not going to change that, you're going to start incorporating anything else.
No.
Then you don't have to worry about that. All those changes, we're going to be your Fannie Mae brokers, your other people, and if you're not going to do that, you just stay where you are and take that other part out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's easy.
Will you redo it and bring it to us?
Yes, yes, because I have, I think I have it on my computer already.
And then just, then we can adopt it, attach this. And right here, African County Treasurer, put C T, somebody keeps going, C T County Treasurer, C T County Treasurer.
Oh, okay. Be consistent.
Yes. One or the other, and it's fine because you're not changing anything else.
Okay.
And that's all you, that's, that would all, and then just bring it back and we'll sign it for you.
Okay.
Does that make sense to y'all?
Yeah, we're just-
Y'all see, we're-
Really not changing anything out of it.
She's already done, she's already established the procedure, she just needs to get it validated that she did it with the outside auditors, like the procedure says she does. That way she's not off with your procedure.
Yeah.
Because we're saying we're doing it, but we haven't done it.
And then that'll take care of my once a year review that we're supposed to do on that policy also, when we get change, make those changes.
So right here, um, can we say no action and you will bring us the updated policy for action?
Put it back on the agenda for another time.
Do we do the December one?
Yes, we can do the first month of December, I mean, the first week of December.
But there's only one being December.
Well, we can do that then.
Yeah.
Have y'all set the date?
I think so.
December?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteenth or sixteenth, that's right.
Yeah, like the middle of the month.
And that way it can all be one big policy for you and it's all together, it's not spread out and then we'll put it on file and you'll have it on file.
And I'll get it cheap before I-
Okay, great.
Am I done for a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. Number twelve, I mean, number eleven was no action, that Bye is going to bring that back for us. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number twelve is a note on record of pre-clearance of the two thousand and eleven redistricting plan for Commissioner's Court for Karnes County is submitted by Rolando Rios. If you'll look in your packages, you have a letter from the Department of Justice from Rolando Rios. Our redistricting has been accepted by the Department of Justice, we do have a pre-clearance. I picked up maps, Pete and I did last week when we left railroad, one's in Miss Frankie's office, one's out there. I don't know what Rolando's doing about maps, he's saying he sent us more, but we did not have maps on our contract, our last one. So I guess he's just providing us some, it was wrongly captured or not wrongly, I don't know, we just didn't have maps. But anyway, there's one out here, if you guys want to go look at your precincts, I did ask him to send us a small precinct map, three-twenty, also you would be able to look at lines or we would be able to put them on file and then color code. I haven't received those yet, once I do receive them, I'll let you guys know. Does that make sense? But it's out there, it's all color coded, it is the big map, we haven't put it on the board yet. Can anyone of you guys help me do that? Anybody have any questions that's out there to look at? And it's everything, it's the exact same plan that we approved, taken the inmates out. Any questions? Number thirteen is acknowledgement on record that the San Antonio Food Bank will be at the Kennedy Street Department Office located at two oh one School Street, Kennedy, Texas. Distribution will begin at eleven AM. That's this Thursday, um, the tenth, two oh one School Street of the old Alamo Building in Kennedy. Um, and it has been advertised above the paper and on the radio, Joe ran an ad and they're running an ad. There's a voucher accountability, the voucher's only for accountability and we're all new to this, so it's going to, you know, first time we're going to be working out the keys. We will be down there by nine AM, distribution will begin at eleven. Any questions? Number fourteen is acknowledgement on record of proclamation by the governor dated October thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, certifying that all counties in Texas are currently threatened by exceptional drought conditions and extreme fire hazard due to a continuing disaster in Texas. That's number fourteen, that's your proclamation, we just got that in from the governor that he did sign that again, so we need to acknowledge it. Any questions? Number fifteen, discuss approve, disapprove reinstating a burn ban effective November eighth, two thousand and eleven, for ninety days with an end date of February sixth, two thousand and twelve. We had this on there last time, we decided to wait to come back, do we want to reinstate the burn ban or do we want to, um, I mean, governor says we're in a disaster, what do y'all think?
I don't think that's going to happen. We're having problems right now. Mr. Molson's, they're running pretty cool.
Did y'all talk, did anyone y'all talk with the other fire chiefs? Have a chance?
I haven't.
Have we talked to Mr. Molson the last time we talked to him?
I've talked to him once, but not, it wasn't, I haven't talked to him the last few days about it.
Seems like there was a real problem, maybe call the judge.
I haven't heard from him.
I, I, I can't speak for anybody else, but I know in our place, there's just a lot of grass.
I know Mr. Beatric's been trying to burn a bunch of brushes, has-
If you don't do anything, the burn, the burn brand is not, is, is still like it was, right? I mean, there's no, there wouldn't even tie him on the others.
No.
I thought, I heard you correct.
But what got confusing is that was adopted with, with, I mean, it was lifted with provisions, right?
Right.
And I wasn't here, so I don't know what those provisions are. And if we want to say that we're leaving it open with provisions, that's fine, because we need to say what those are.
Same as last time, right?
I think so.
I know, last time we didn't pick up the signs, we didn't do anything, or what I was told is that we weren't going to pick up the signs or take any of the tickers off. When I called you and asked, the result was that we-
What did we say, just no action on this, Bob, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, yeah, I think you can do it the other way, they would just stay like it is, but the judge's saying that maybe, if you, Mr. K nine ninety, K M L, they've had it on there like once a week or so and basically what you have to do is you call your local fire department.
Right.
And you do some other things that, uh, makes, it just common sense.
Sheriff.
Just, and sheriff department.
So do you want to say anything about that? Um, I mean, I know the signs are still up and the ticker's still up.
Just leave them up.
I know that's what y'all said last time, that's what you were told me last time, that we were supposed to. But do we want to say no action, but-
Take no action.
The last time we said we were going to put it back, we were going to put it back on the agenda to make a decision if we were going to keep it or not. See, that's what we said.
And so you're not, from what I would say, you're not going to, not going to change the motion.
We should be, I think it should be some kind of decision.
No change at all, which means the stipulation stays there.
Okay. All right, this is what it says, "A motion by Commissioner Jaren second by Commissioner Alden to approve lifting the burn ban, but to call the fire department, search department first, use caution and don't start a fire in the afternoon when committed is down or when wind is blown." That was a restriction.
So you want to defer to the ten thirty-one decision? No action?
I wasn't even here. I wasn't even here.
I know, that was the, that was the-
That was a correction.
That's a correction was made. Called it, you weren't here.
So no action to tip anyone? Is that what we're saying, Bob?
Yes. Yes, no action, because I mean, it stays exactly as it was.
Okay.
It's my one reiteration when I called it. From a radio station, tell them it's going to stay like it is, you got to do those things. That's just common sense, really.
Because like I said, the tickers were still up and the signs were still up, we're not taking those down, we're still burning with caution, right?
Right, caution.
Is that, is that what y'all said? Okay.
Caution at those.
So it's no action to defer to ten thirty-one. Right?
Is there, is there any other counties in Texas that are up? Cause right here, I just, yeah, I want to keep it going, that way people can burn, but then I, I guess we haven't heard, you know, any problems or anything, but the governor did say right here on October thirty-first, certifying that all counties in Texas are currently threatened by exceptional drought conditions. Is there anybody else that's lifted their burn ban? I don't know.
Uh, we, I ran it across Lift Serv and some have lifted, some has not, it just depends on their location, where they are, what they're doing. I mean, everybody's got a different theory, just depending where they're at.
Well, you know, the problem with it is, we have a burn ban and people going to burn for months and months and months, and all of a sudden you lift it, oh my God, there's so much smoke in there. I, I have allergies and I just can't take it. If they just burn a little bit all along, it's better than all at once, you know what I'm saying?
So we just take no action or do we get it all?
No action to defer to ten thirty-one, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Number sixteen is discuss approve, disapprove, an interlocal agreement between the City of Kennedy, Texas, Escudero Watershed District, Karnes County, Texas, Karnes County Hospital District, and San Antonio River Authority relating to the reinvestment zone number two. The City of Kennedy and authorize the county judge to execute approved. This is Ford Pat, Ford was going to be here this morning and he got called to jury duty somehow, or grand jury or something. What this is though, I pulled some old notes for y'all. And if you'll look at number eleven, Miss Frankie was nice enough to find this and tell us where to go find it. It says, number eleven on the agenda was to discuss approve, disapprove Karnes County's participation with the City of Kennedy and other taxing entities in a tax incremental reinvestment zone known as the TURFs. And then the action was, is, uh, what Miss Jonas had captured under number eleven was Walter Hill with the City of Kennedy, industry tailor, financial advisor for the City of Kennedy, addressed the court about the sale of one hundred and sixty-six point oh four acres tract now owned by the Fordy Corporation. It is not tax exempt and not on the tax roll. They have a buyer for this land and asking the county along with other taxing entities to participate in a tax incremental investment rein, reinvestment zone. After discussion, a motion made by Sebo D Rosette Junior and seconded by Carl Hummel to approve the participation with the City of Kennedy and other taxing entities in a tax incremental reinvestment zone at seventy-five percent for TURFs and twenty-five percent for the county for taxes into the general fund, not road and bridge specials. They also asked for representation, representation on the board, which we did that, we appointed Randy Stevenson, remember? And it said, all voted aye, motion carry. So I called Mr. Pat and I took it to Mr. Bustelman and he said, this is the same agreement that we agreed to with this interlocal agreement from this last time. It's a, it's the same thing that we have. They're just asking us now to execute it, it's finally gotten started. So we agreed to it in a line and now they're just asking us to sign the interlocal agreement.
Which to do this, we'll have to have on the agenda a budget amendment to facilitate paying that seventy-five percent of the taxes to the TERF.
You sent me that one?
Sent you an agenda item? Okay.
We're going to have to canvass anyway, so we have a meeting. So can we, can you go ahead and execute it prior to amendment? I don't see why we could, can we?
You, yeah, you can do that. You just can't pay it until the money's in the budget.
Right. But we can execute it?
I think so, because you're obligated pretty much anyway.
Well, from now on, we are. What do you guys think?
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Kennedy, Texas, Escudero Watershed District, Karnes County, Texas County Hospital District, and San Antonio River Authority relating to the investment zone. Number two, City of Kennedy, Texas, and authorize county judge to execute if approved.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You opposed, Pete?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that, Carol? Okay, motion carries. Number 17 is to submit a ballot for Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2012, 2013. The county has 1404 votes for the nominees. Discuss approve, disapprove allocation of votes and allow county judge to execute if approved. Through the county jurisdiction, we have 1404 votes. And we have six people on here, there's five seats. That kinda gets confusing. The only thing that we need to figure out is how we're gonna divide those votes. I say divide them all equally would be my opinion, but y'all have y'all's opinions. What do you think, Rosie? Pearl, do you think? Do you have any discussion you wanna add to that?
What are we supposed to divide this up into number three, twenty?
1404 divided by six.
You don't have to.
We don't have to. It, I mean, we can vote, you can, we can do it any way we want.
If you want to.
I mean, it's discretionary, we can divide them any way we want.
Or you can do it all to one.
All to one, right.
Well, it's discretionary, yeah.
Well, I have no taxing entities here. I don't know why we should give more to one than others for one than others.
Oh, if the way you would have been there, if you had somebody that you wanted to represent the county, that you nominated, you would give all the votes. I might consider that, right?
We're, we're about to give more to one than others. We pendulous here, Tracy Whitty, her businessman here in Karnes, Karn City. Well, it doesn't, that's Karn City, but that's not the county.
So how do we... I say we split them up equally.
I say equal.
I say equal.
I say...
Uh, what is the motion here to, I make a motion that we submit the ballot for Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors 2012, 13, with our 1,404 votes to be equally divided amongst nominees and allow the county judge to execute if approved.
So there's six nominees? So 234 votes each?
234? And that will, that will be 234 votes to each voter. I'd like to capture that, my motion is... Thank you, Malana.
Somebody say second to Paul again?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is number 18, and it's discussing impossible action adopting a resolution establishing policy and procedure for a litter, litter abatement plan for the unincorporated and county-owned areas in Karnes County. I put this on here, and I'll show y'all why I put it on here. I don't have a, and he's supposed to be here, he's not here. I don't have a color copier to be able to make these copies for y'all. But, y'all wanna pass them around and look at them. Kevin Moore with the city brought me these, and they're, you know what, let me take them apart, we'll just switch apart, cause they're four pages. And I'm seeing, y'all can get them. Moore, the City of Karn City, the code compliance guy? These are some lots that we own within the county. Sorry, James, I'm trying to give you numbers.
The City of Karn City.
And they're our county lots.
What are you trying to buy, see?
Uh, well, they want, they like to claim...
Judge, you know where that's at?
Uh, here's the locations, they're highlighted. Look, they're all highlighted for us. Yes, sir? Y'all wanna changes? Sir?
There's a copy in my office, Judge.
You have another copy? Okay. Well... You can look at these up here.
If it works.
If it works.
I hate, it does.
Where's Cleveland?
Area's way back there. I went with Kevin to look at that, probably about a year ago, nine months ago.
I think that the problem that we're having is though, there's just, and I put on here, city-owned places and everywhere else, cause there's just litter everywhere.
Yeah.
And I know we've had this discussion up here before about litter throughout the county. And we're gonna have to figure out something for a litter abatement program. I mean, look at some of the stuff that they're dumping. I mean, it doesn't look like these people have an extreme amount of money. I mean, I don't know if they're dumping because they can't get, this is awful close to the dump. We think that if they could afford the dump, they'd have dumped it.
I know that's, I know we've talked about this, it looks like a dead horse, but when a trailer pulls up there, Jesse or whoever tells them, oh, you know, fifty dollars or whatever, dump all the stuff. Well, they say, they throw the truck in reverse and they hug off. You know what they're gonna do. So, I mean, it's really a double-edged sword because, you know, on one hand, you, you collect fifty dollars or sixty dollars, that's good, and they dump it right there and you can get rid of it. But then, on the other hand, they throw it in reverse and they go down some county road or some vacant lot and they throw it all out. Well, then we have to go get it, we have to bring it back, and then we have to pay for it anyway, so. And we've talked about this before. We, it's just, I don't know what y'all think about that, but sometimes collecting that fifty dollars is not really worth it because figure a couple of guys, truck, a trailer, time to go pick it up.
Now, I'm not charging them anything, huh?
Well...
That way they'll dump it into the trash, please.
Well, I know the county's gonna pay.
I do.
And I wrote in British guys, instead of parent, rather, they're out there picking up trash.
Lots of trash.
Sofas.
I guarantee, I guarantee you something. You don't charge anything at that dump, right? It'd be a bigger expense to the county, right? And I'm telling you, man, these people, man, they're not, they're not gonna waste gas to come from eight, nine, ten miles, they'll still throw trash on the roads. And I say, that's, that's our gas, man, and we're not gonna waste gas. Boom, they go to the tire. I guarantee you, we might get rid of maybe 10, 15% of the trash, but there will always be trash on these roads, all the time. I understand that, it would be great, you know, to, you know, do it for nothing, but at the county's expense, and we're still gonna be picking up stuff off the sides of the roads. Cause these people won't want, cause it's free. Now, it's free, I mean, think about it, it's just people, man, you know, in general, they're still gonna throw it on those kind of roads, cause they're not gonna wanna waste those ten bucks of gas, that's whole pack. I mean, you know, I'm just kinda, you know, it's the truth. I think it's the truth.
Tracy, how's it down there from you, where they used to dump? You just throw the same stuff up there? Go where? They dump it off the side of the river bridge, creek bridge, then a ditch.
Cause I think out there would be more...
But it hasn't been as bad lately. But there's still debris out there, block springs and a ditch.
What's that road going by the Capitol Church in Kennedy? That farm-to-market road?
743.
Okay, and then you turn that first county road to the left out there by, like where all those farmers are? The Alberts and the Atkins family? Yeah, there's trash everywhere out there. I know y'all picked it up before, but it's back.
We go out there several times in a year to pick up trash. I know they've called in several times.
So we need to figure out something. They want us to do something with this, this is ours, what do we do with it?
They need to put out some cameras so we can catch it.
They're right. Give me a budget, we stick cameras out. Camera wants to...
Pretty hard.
And I mean, it's hard for us to keep deploying road and bridge as the litter, litter abatement program, cause they're road and bridge.
Well, I know a thing came up, remember, James, about the roadside parks and the state was closing, I was like, we didn't wanna close them, but I said right away, I'm not gonna have our guys picking up stacks. There could be needles in there, the guys could have hepatitis, whatever. Put them on the brick. It's just not a good deal.
It's just an idea, I don't know, but y'all tell me, on some of this pro, on some of these, somebody that's real trashed up like that, you know, it's gonna cost the county a lot to go over there, clean it up, time, and Jeff don't have the manpower to send them up there. We hire someone, it's gonna cost us a lot of money too. Why don't we get ahold of maybe the landowners next to it and see if we can give them the land, they clean it up within a ninety-day period, six-month period?
What about using community service?
Yeah.
It was a new community service, but half of, more than half don't show up no matter what, or three-quarters of them don't show up.
Some of these lots I have looked at, and I'm sure James can attest to this, ready for the county to consider quit paying it to the city and let them take the responsibility to clean it up. Because the county, even if we put it up for sale, it's not going to go very much.
Chances are the city will...
But we keep the middle.
It's just, we have a horrible litter problem all over the county right now, because it's horrible, and we're doing nothing, and so we need to come up with something. I don't know what the solution is, and I know maybe not letting them dump for free might not be a good idea, but it might be something we wanna try for a while, just to see if we can pull, cause we're picking it up and taking it to the dumps ourselves right now, Jeff's guys are.
Well, I know in years past, y'all had roll-offs, right? You had one that showed, you had one...
Well, that's what I was gonna say, that was before my time.
Oh, that's before you...
Yeah, and that was maybe thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years ago, and they had one in Gillette. And what I know is just hearsay, they said that people started throwing dead animals and reported, you know, it's just, even if it's something free.
Well, yeah, and then they'll just throw it on the side.
They don't respect it. Doesn't matter.
And they reject something into this, we do free over here, is that for all people, the trash truck?
No, not well field, no, we wouldn't.
There you go.
Well, it would have to be residents, that's why it says resolution, we could do residents of Karnes County or something.
They're living here now, some of them people, some of them are...
Yeah, but if it says Utah, their driver's license.
I know, but you know what I mean, they're, how long does it take to be there?
They present a water bill.
Well, that's true too.
Their residents.
We need to come up with something, cause there's litter everywhere.
Did you see the toilet paper? Did you see that?
Did somebody lose a load, though?
A bunch, yeah, right outside of pharmacy.
I mean, that's my brand new.
There's toilet paper everywhere.
I know, we're not at my collection of it, and if we pull up, I'm not gonna... I didn't know the driver's license. Oh, we do every one of these lots.
Can we, can we do something, you think, with the utility bill for a while, just try to see if it works? Can we try something?
Try something else.
Letting Karnes County residents go to the dump and get rid of stuff, or someone to get it here?
Let's do that in conjunction with the driver's license, whether it be residency and county children.
Does that make sense, Mr. But what do you, I mean, what do you think?
Well, right now, that, that big old pile of wood that we have right there, that's my concern. Uh, I've been talking with TCEQ and everything about the last week, we can have two weeks, and I was getting an answer from him, cause I wanted to get it burned up, you know, burn it out and stuff. George called back and said there's tires in there, there's TVs in there, Georgia cheese, there's all kinds of stuff in there, and I said, well, he said, well, if y'all go through it and pick it all through, then y'all can burn. I said, there's no way in the world, man, we can pick it through. So right now, we have I don't know how many yards, hundreds of yards, what are we gonna do, if we can't burn it? We start letting people, and I'm not trying to go against the citizen, I'm from Karn County, I'm always going, wanting to be, but the thing is, we let them dump for free, yeah, then we're gonna have a lot of, what are we gonna do with the stuff? Is it gonna, at the cost of the county, what is it, thirty, forty, fifty, seventy, eighty thousand bucks?
Well, but look how trash the county looks with all that stuff just laying around.
I, I understand that.
I mean, you know, the highway department goes by and they pick it all up.
It's gonna cost us no matter what.
It's gonna cost us, but we have to, I mean, it just looks horrible.
I don't know what to tell, I don't know what to tell you, we can't burn over there, man, I've tried, I've been tried, they told me no, flat out.
Kevin told me that we could request a burn permit if we take the tires down.
Burn permit from the city. Since I've already talked to TCEQ, and they came, they sent an investigator the other day, and they took pictures of all of it and everything, he spotted TVs in there and stuff, and he said those TVs need to be pulled down. I said, TVs are, you know, what is it, is bad, is glass or whatever, he said, now, he said, there's a lot of things in it, and the TV that you can't burn.
So we'd have to separate or use, I don't know, but we need to, I mean, we need to do something, we're doing nothing, I don't know what to do. Or it's like I said, we try it free for a while and pay somebody to come get all this, cause our roads are trashed.
We give it, we give it, I mean, for free, we need about ten rollers, ten boxes over there. How much is it, each one, about a thousand, seven hundred?
Wilson County privatized their, their garbage and their trash collection.
I don't know, I don't know, guys, if y'all think this should be, this should be free, then that's fine, I'll vote against it, but I mean, if y'all, you know, there's five of us, so...
What else can we put in a resolution? I mean, what can we do to help? I just wanna help, I mean, it just looks horrible.
Because of, the sheriff mentioned, what about the, these guys that, you know, from the companies and everything, they're, how long does it take to become a resident of Karn County? Six months, three months, a year, they've been here.
I don't think the judge, maybe if they show the water bill or whatever, and the driver's license, maybe...
But if, I would say if someone, if someone says I can't afford it, we could put, or a notice, if they could get a voucher from the judge, that they would get a discounted rate, or dump it free, or whatever, if they come and ask for it. I don't know, but it, you know, might do that. And not just make it free to everybody, you can't just say it's free, cause it's gonna cost us.
That's probably a pretty good idea, Pete, cause I, I mean, that's just chucking it on a road, that you have to go find it, you can't, you know.
And Camel, Camel was good about making public happen, like that, if you can afford it, go to the judge and ask for a voucher, you know.
Yeah, I know we're spending a lot of time on design, I'm sorry, let me say one other thing, that the majority of the people that throw this trash on the roads are people that can't afford to pay for it. I know, I've been doing this, when I was out there eight, nine years or something, uh, I could, I didn't cash, but I would go to the bags and everything and find names, pictures and everything, that's when Sheriff Moot was here, I went to the sheriff, and I told him, what can we do? He goes, unless someone physically comes up and reports to me, goes, we can't do anything with pictures, we can't do anything with letters, we can't do anything with diaries, anything that we find, I found all kinds of stuff in there, when we pick up trash off the roads, and we did it all the time when we're out there. And there was nothing we could do unless somebody physically seen it. I seen three guys in a Ford pickup, few years old, I mean, going down, right there at the end of Cal, going down the counter, going to Kennedy, loaded with trash. I followed, followed them all the way, they ended up coming out over there in Kennedy, they didn't throw anything. There's people that can afford it, man.
So, but what do we do? Do we just leave the litter on the side of the road, do we, or at least do, I mean, we're gonna have to come up with something. I don't know what it is, do we hire somebody, do we amend our budget to come, yeah, Sharon?
Suggestion?
Uh-huh.
Uh, you have your area cleanups from time to time that are free to the residents of Karn County. Could you not offer twice a month, free day to take your trash to Jesse's place at the wayside? Once or twice a month, it's free.
But then again, what are we gonna do with all that? That's good, but what are we gonna do with all that trash? We got trash piled up there.
We need to have somebody come get it, either all you have, or a management...
What we talking about now? Is it cheaper just hard, don't sort of, you think we can pick it out, that's why Jesse do it, right? Think it's cheaper to pick it out?
It probably be cheaper to pick it up. And now, right now, he, George gave me a number, I'm gonna call him today, I just talked to him yesterday, it's where counties get help when they can't, when they have some situation like this, so I'll let y'all know what, what I, I'm gonna dig into it to see if they can help us do something with that. As of right now... I'm just scared to get too much trash out there and it's gonna cost us a lot of money.
It's gonna cost us a lot of money eventually to pick up all these roads.
And then, and then we're, we're a county, we're an entity, right? Who's gonna be out there to make sure that they're not throwing asbestos stuff there? And then what if they land asbestos lands on our land like that, then we're, we gotta pay twenty, thirty thousand dollars to get asbestos cleaned up, because one guy came in with a trailer load, someone didn't notice it was asbestos or something, you know what I mean?
What do you think, Bob?
I'm sorry, I don't have any suggestions. I don't know how you can have a, as far as giving them tickets, I've had a couple of come through the office, and I remember once, because we did collect on, a fine on one, just one that I remember, because we never could, we never could pin it down. This one particular one, a lady saw it, but she wouldn't, uh, she wouldn't tell us who it was, she was afraid to. But she said it was my trash, so she wouldn't have paid the fine.
Could, could we not establish some kind of interlocal agreement with TDC or somebody that have the inmates, kind of pick up trash on the side of the roads? I know Beville does it, Beville lets them, plants downtown, they beautify the community.
They've done that in the past here.
Stormer, Stormer used to do that?
Yeah.
Can we not go talk to maybe the warden out there?
That's an excellent suggestion.
I mean, it's...
They're so short-staffed, Judge, from what I understand, they're like at half sta, half staff, aren't they?
Nope, nope, they're, they're up to speed.
They're up to speed?
I mean, but I think it's worth it to ask them, I mean, it's worth it to figure out something, I think.
Talk to the, what?
Well, I know I had a situation on one of my roads, but anyway, we found a check stub from a company, and you're right, James, he made good money. The deputy wore in, called him and said, hey, look, and he said, hey, look, I went around, first it wasn't his trash, and then he said he went around on that corner really fast with his tailgate down. But he went, and he picked it all up, so. Now, if they walk into a court with your county court, Bob, and you have a trial by jury, jury ain't gonna buy that, you went around the corner real fast with the tailgate down, I don't think...
But, I mean, we're gonna get deputies right now, everybody's still playing.
It's gonna be invisible, invisible.
I mean, you know, we've had this population influx, and everybody wants a deputy there now. So I guess we could amend the budget to get lots of deputies, but it's not gonna...
Is that an emergency?
Is that an emergency? I guess it just depends on who's playing there, right?
I know that the state, you know, you see these signs, such and such ranch, or such and such family, and they have dropped so many miles up the, this farm-to-market road, and they actually pick up trash every month or every other month, and we could look into it, something like that on the county roads.
Do a Pride in Karn County Day. Just have a Pride in Karn County Day, have all the civic groups, kids groups, whatever, one day, just either pick up trash in, in each of your precincts or something. Make it a county-wide.
Those people, bring it to, go up there, free.
I would like that.
A little bit, it's in, you know, the ones that go out and pick it up.
Each commissioner, we could get our own little crew and fan out in our precincts and.
People within your precinct to volunteer one day to come in and clean up.
Yeah, and then get their name in the paper or something.
Well, it don't matter, I don't want my name in the paper.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask you this, if we developed a resolution, can we put something in there, Bob? 'Cause you could put many things in a resolution, we, I mean, Vi had a good suggestion, and Sharon had a good suggestion.
Sure.
Can we do like a once-a-month Pride in Carnes County Day, or, you know, quarterly, I mean, I guess quarterly, one time a year? For precincts, we could do it?
Quarterly would, quarterly not be enough, maybe.
I think that adopt the highways, I think your contract is like four times in a year, within a year, did I, you know?
I can't remember.
Yeah, we should do one, get it, and then we adopt the highway.
Four, three months.
Four times a year.
So, we could do, we could do a once-a-month Pride in Carnes County, or a quarterly Pride in Carnes County.
Quarterly is good, but, no, child, it'll be three months, that's probably better than that one.
And then, can we, can we, can we go to the warden, or at least go out there and see? If we could develop some type of interlocal agreement to help us?
I'm not really sure how Stormer did, you wanna call Stormer, you can ask Stormer about it and see what, 'cause he always has one, always.
Well, we can go out there and talk to him, I mean, those guys are so open. I mean, they do it in Beville, and when I, when I used to live for a while, so they used to come get them all the time, and we take them out to the community. I mean, look, they have planted all these plants, and they beautify Beville, it's gorgeous.
If we have Pride in Carnes County, or something sponsored by the county as the lead agency, is the county gonna be liable if somebody gets hurt?
How does, how does Tech Stop do that? I put this on, it's litter control.
That's, that's a great thing. Got a mean county attorney, I don't think, because.
You got it.
Yeah, but if they fall in a pothole, if they get stuck by needles.
Rattlesnake.
Exactly. Who's responsible?
Who's responsible? They're gonna end up suing us, for sure, they're gonna aim straight at us, straight at us.
I mean, well, somebody wants to participate on a voluntarily basis, a voluntary basis.
They sign waivers, you can just waive so much, but you can't waive something, probably.
So, voluntary Pride in Carnes County Day. Let's do it that way. Um, that's right, I mean, but it's, at least it's something, it's better than doing nothing, and if we can go look at an interlocal agreement with the warden, you might call him, Bob, and talk to him.
I'll tell you, Riddleville, County Road, Riddleville, the end of, we cleaned it up, well, with a community service guy, well, three months ago, he cleaned that, so, we took trailer loads of trash, he cleaned it all up. I went and checked on it, maybe the next weekend, it was already trashed back before, there's a sign that says, "No dumping allowed."
I don't know if we have any.
We're gonna, we're gonna run ourselves a while, man, they're still gonna dump.
I know, but if we just leave it there and let it fall up, eventually, you know, it's gonna keep going and going and going, and get us something, get you somewhere.
Do we have anybody that uses community service anymore? No, we, you have to have somebody with the, that can go out there with them, and seek to it, that it gets done. That's one way of getting something done, but you got the liability problem also. But you can probably get an insurance for a reasonable amount.
But does anybody have any opposition to at least adopting a resolution to see if we can get a voluntary program like Vi's and getting an interlocal agreement with the T D C?
Yes, Judge, I'm, I'm all for that. We can't live our lives in fear of some kind of lawsuit, I mean.
And that, this trash just looks horrible. I mean, we're a pretty little county with Whataburger and Burger King, and we don't even have one. Just trashed all over the fences, drive down our county roads, and the fences are just covered in bags.
Don't go down those roads.
Well, I guess we could choose, not too bad. You gotta go look, and, and I mean, but they're, they're viable complaints, and I mean, the state doesn't leave all that trash just laying down one eighty-one in the median and everything else, they pick it up. So, I think we have some type of responsibility to the citizens to develop something to help them.
We could probably get some of these little, little companies, like quarterly, they'll give us so many guys and a truck, and, and they'll help us.
If they advertise community something, everybody wants to be a good neighbor right now.
Right.
And that would be the best way to give back, you know, just being a good neighbor.
Yes, so, in, you know, Geo State, and a Wilford County, and just voluntary in general.
That's why we said, you know, just on a volunteer basis, like what I was saying, and then let's look at the interlocal agreement. Would y'all be okay if I just adopted those in a resolution to make some kind of?
Yes.
How far does a waiver go? Say, say someone, twenty years old, although his wife's having a baby, whatever, he chips, falls, gets run over or something, gets killed, and he's under with the county, how far would that waiver that he signed go?
Depending on what happened to him and what the cause was. Uh, you can't waive something, you can't waive everything.
So, we'd still be open?
To some extent, you'd be less open, but you still have some.
No, we're all gonna have food distribution today, Thursday, what if a case falls on us? We'll be all right, I mean, we, we gotta give, we gotta give back.
We'd be open to the minor ones, right, but, I mean, not open to the minor one, but open to a, like a major accident.
Depending on what happens, of course, you can't, no way to know. You do, well, you have to also have to do everything you can to prevent it happening. And you have to have people out there, somebody that's watching, looking.
You know, what we could do, adopt this resolution, each commissioner can go to oilfield companies and, and his precinct, can say, "Look, we have, can you help us?" Yeah, I can give you six guys for a quarter of the basis.
Well, I called out the select, this man neighbor was complaining about all the trash. I called out there, thirty minutes, they're about there, fifty dollars, and he's happy.
No, and, and then we'll do it, and that's the neat part about America, we live off volunteers and charity. We have people volunteer and donate, do, and.
So, it's Chevron, we all had sticks when they had, because of ranchers, and we were out there walking all through the patch.
Volunteers get burned out.
That's true, they do.
It'll take long.
But we got.
We gotta start somewhere.
I did clean up for, I did clean up for years, I had so many volunteers, and it ended, it ended up being my son there. Every weekend, out of, we started with like twenty-something people, all excited and everything, picking up trash, doing all kinds. We joined along from seventeen, eighteen, ten, five, I was putting in everything, ice, sodas, food, the whole nine yards, I'm not saying the whole nine yards. At the end, it ended up being my son here, that was it. Then I stopped, I stopped, I just stopped, because volunteers get, volunteers get burned out.
I mean, Carl's, Carl's got a good idea, because they're always looking for a way to participate.
Oh, I agree.
They're only gonna help you a little bit, and then.
They probably have those trash, trash.
Or they, they create.
Okay, but we're gonna, does anybody have any ideas? I mean, does anybody have anything else they'd like to put in a resolution? So far, we have the volunteer on a quarterly basis, I mean, try to get an interlocal agreement with the prison. Do we wanna give anybody a day or two discount, a Carnes County discount or anything, or are we leaving that alone, is there?
What don't we put together, why don't you, what is our next meeting?
Sixteen.
If I wanna consider.
Not in each precinct, I mean, if each precinct does one.
You're going to have another meeting probably next week, because, why don't you, not tangle this, but go ahead and draw up something to return on that day.
Okay, but I wanna know what the things are, so we can have to take them back out that same day. So.
But if you do semi-annual free days at the facility, like Sharon suggested, but do it on a semi-annual basis, twice a year, free dump days.
But so, you have to show proof that you live as a resident, that you've been here more than three years or something like that?
Semi-annual at no cost, the one, like what Sharon was saying, is to weekly just go.
That you've been here, not, you know what I'm trying to say, over a couple of years or something.
It can't be. We'll show your voter registration card.
All you have to do is be ninety days to vote. So.
Yeah, but most of these outsiders, these oil-related people are just changing their utility, a Carnes County utility bill.
It's more of a business. It can't be commercial things.
With a Carnes County utility bill. A private, a private Carnes County, or a resident Carnes County.
No commercial business dumping.
There you go.
No commercial business, we can put that in there.
Uh, what about tires?
Tires are pain.
You already see where we're at with tires, what T C T said when they saw those tires out there.
They didn't tell me nothing about the tires. Investigator was aiming, I was asking for a burn.
'Cause we were doing real good at some of those seminars, feet on words, they start hunting tires, we probably should have left early. We have a problem.
Yeah, I know, they didn't mention the tire, 'cause we were, we were, you know, I called them for the, investigator came for the burn.
I mean, even if we, even if we have to look at amendments down the road or something, 'cause I don't think we're expecting all this trash just to appear on the road. That's gotta be some kind of unforeseen circumstance to have trash just on every county road. We gotta, so, so far, we have voluntary quarterly Pride in Carnes County Day, an interlocal agreement trying to see with T D C, and a resident, semi-annual, uh, at no cost with the utility bill, with the residential utility bill, no commercial, correct?
Right, well, what about Geo, Judge?
What about Geo, I missed that, I missed the whole Geo thing.
Well, I mean, you, you got the state.
Those are detainees, those are detainees, it's different.
Oh, it's different.